For his work in that connectivity. It's a way that board members assist us. And so I would just like to publicly thank you for your work.
I'm just going to say the same thing. That I think it's what trustee Garcia has done is really a role model for all of us. It's trustees to be ambassadors, to be able to help with the enrollment and the NEIU's mission. So, thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great.
I would like to ask Dr. Daniel Volgas to provide us an update on the student housing.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. So I'm going to give a quick update on our housing numbers. And then I'm going to introduce Sarah Garcia, who's here from American Campus Communities. She's their regional manager who will present the marketing plan that you requested information about. So I think everyone knows, but I'll just remind us that this is a public-private partnership with Collegiate Housing Foundation and American Campus Communities. They are the ones who manage and operate the buildings. Well, Sarah is one of the representatives. By the way, Sarah has been with us since day one of our, since we opened the residence building before that. So we have a capacity to hold 440 students. Our occupancy requirement for this year, it's 80%, which is 352 students. Today, we have 179 students living in the residence hall, which is 42% of the occupancy. I'd also like to remind everyone that our occupancy is based on the enrollment that we have at the university. And since we've had enrollment decreases, we have less students living in the residence hall. And so due to the protected occupancy for the year, we're expecting a similar contribution that we made last year, which is around $2 million. Some key initiatives that we're working on for the years. Obviously, we will continue to lease and make these units available for students. One of the good things that has happened over the last few months is that the NEIU Foundation has provided scholarships for students. So we have approved close to $50,000 of scholarships. That students are getting for both fall and spring semester, which is a great thing. Thank you, Lisa, for your help with that. We also have, we're working on a summer conference program that we will put in fully in place for next summer. And that is due to now the second option in terms of leasing, the 10-month leasing option, which allows us to then house students in the summer. We're continuing to work with community colleges to house their students while they're taking courses there in the hopes that they not only have a residential experience, but hopefully transfer to Northeastern. And then we will continue to be, implement a very aggressive marketing plan to make sure that we, as our president reminds us, we cannot even extend our term. So let me turn it over to Sarah, who can talk a little bit about that plan.
Good afternoon. I was obviously asked to come and talk a little bit about our marketing plan. And I'm going to do a pretty brief overview. It's very extensive. I believe in your packets of information for today. You do have our full marketing plan and our renewal plan, as well as what the applicant, as well as the application process for our students, for your review. First of all, I wanted to talk about how we attract students. We're not out there trying to attract students to Northeast or residents to Northeastern. We're trying to attract the students who are already coming here to, as Dr. Volgas says, have that on-campus living experience. So we have several target markets, new students. We heavily rely on our partnership with Lamont and his team as far as attending admissions events, being involved with our RSCP lists for all those admissions events. They send us bi-weekly a list of every student that was admitted in the past two weeks. And we have a process for that, which I'll get to in a minute. We rely on high school guidance counselors participating with the articulation luncheon that's usually here, making sure that they have our information. In the past, we've sent info packets to particular high schools. So they have housing information right there so that they just keep it on the radar that Northeastern does now have housing. It's a great choice if you're looking for that whole college experience. And then school tours. If you come over to The Nest about any day of the week, there's a large tour going on, which is wonderful. The campus community who brings folks from schools around to the campus has done a wonderful job. We've been volunteering The Nest and those visits to Northeastern, and we greatly appreciate that. Our current residents are a major target market, one that we have done very well with. Our renewal numbers for this property are above average compared to what we normally see. So we know that students are having a good experience. We have a very extensive renewal campaign that extends five rounds. And I think you have a copy of that. And then through our programming, just connecting with students, making sure that they are academically successful so that they can come back next year is a major focus for us. Transfer students is also a priority in year one. I know that is where we got a very large portion of our students through transfer orientations and again through those admissions list of transfer students. International students is another target market. We use their list of admissions and any student that's admitted on an international basis. We personally reach out to them, give them information, talk them through the process. We also send recruiting materials with Chris when she goes places. Typically, we have branded flash drives that have all the housing information on them. And they have space for Chris to load additional information should she choose to. We have our housing brochure in three different languages, and we're working on more. So we're continuing to expand that as well. For our current students, so students who are attending Northeastern but don't yet live at The Nest, we typically have at least one to two activities a week where we're trying to reach these students. We're tailgating in the union. We've got flyers up. We visit with the student orgs. We've had student org fairs in student housing. We sponsor student orgs. We sponsor intermurals. We've had open houses. And we constantly invite those groups over to tour. Next, I wanted to talk about a little bit of our follow-up process. So when a student comes to us, what do we do? Traffic is kind of what Dr. Friday alluded to, is the inbound traffic. Those are students who have kind of come to us either at a table event. They submitted a guest card online. We got their information from One Stop Enrollment. And once we gave that information into our system, we have 12 touchpoints of follow-up. So they're not lost. We go for 28 days where we're contacting them three different ways, four times. After that 28 days, they don't fall off. They stay in our system and any broad campaigns, they're included in. So that hopefully maybe if they just haven't made their mind or waiting on their financial aid packet, they're not lost in the list. We're still working with them, but we do know that students decide in that first 30 days. So that's where we try to hit them hardest. If you look over the other side on the right, the admissions list. When we get an admissions list from Lamont's team every two weeks, we then have a 10-week follow-up program that we do with that list. Obviously, if they apply or lease within that 10 weeks, they're taken off the list. But you can see we have a variety of ways that we reach out to those students to try to convert them. As I mentioned before, our renewal campaign has five rounds of marketing. Each round that we do with our students consists of a door-to-door campaign. We have a specific event during that round. Often, there's more than one. We have contests with our staff as far as whose floor has renewed the most. We have calling campaigns to go to students and the guarantors. We do text messaging. We do targeted guarantor information as far as postcards and e-glass. And then a lot of times we do some fun door hangers like the space for rent, don't lose your space, don't have to move, all of those kind of fun things. And at the top, we do do preferred pricing. So if students renew for the residence hall in their preferred pricing periods, usually until March 31st, they receive the same price as the previous year. So it's kind of a way of, and we talked about freezing. We do that a little bit with housing, and it does help. This is our other marketing list outside of all of those other areas. This is the list that I'm not sure if you're aware, but monthly, we meet as a management team with key members of the Northeastern administration. And we discuss this list every month. We review it. People tell us that there's things that are missing. We don't have a date. This is an example, one from last year. One from this year has a lot of TDDs on it because we're just starting out. But as you can see, we've broken it out into our target markets. We're trying to focus on things and get the input of everybody in our group. Last but not least, I have some examples of some of our marketing, things that we've done in the past, and also that even continue to hopefully drive students to get to campus. Sometimes, once they become an admit, they might not convert. And we try in every effort to help with that. So here's one when they're admitted. This is one of the first points that goes out. It's congratulating them on their admission and then kind of gives them their next steps. Complete your facts, take your placement testing, sign up for new student orientation. Oh yeah, and apply for student housing. So we're trying to give them all that information and be a good partner. We have, when they sign up for orientation, a lot of times we get those RSCP lists. And this is a postcard that goes out, it's the front and the back. Come by, we have VIP tours and refreshments afterwards. We'll often do a call campaign along with this postcard. We've done a lot of different campaigns that we try. This one's spending more time here and less time in traffic. It's called our K-They Commute Campaigns. We've done it in a variety of ways. These come about every two weeks. The staff at The Nest and the corporate staff at American Campus, myself, our regional vice president, we have an assigned marketing director. I'll get on the phone every two weeks and discuss, what are the trends then? What can we be doing? This worked here. Maybe we can try this here at The Nest. That's where this campaign came from. And we continue to try new things. This is four easy steps for movement. This is an example of an e-glass that went out. So it just makes you see the variety of marketing that we have. Any questions?
So Sarah, I have a question. Actually, maybe a couple. I don't think it's any secret that the housing has cost Northeastern millions of dollars. And in one way, it's good to see a lot of programs, a lot of initiatives. But by the same token, I'm wondering how many of these are going to be very effective? When did you actually start trying to help fill The Nest? Again, you know, it goes back a few years now. We have not met our goals. It is costing us a lot of money. And while I'm happy to hear that you've changed programs for students to go from a 12-year contract to a 10-month contract. As one example, does that impact, or is Northeastern still impacted? So it saves the students, which is great. But is Northeastern still then committed to a certain dollar amount that it has? It is. So while it's great that it's helping the students, which I'm all for, it still hurts Northeastern, and maybe even more so.
Yes, it does.
So I think I'm very frustrated and very disappointed. You know, while we're supposed to be partners, it seems like Northeastern's taking the full loss. So any thoughts you have on what you've done, what's going to be different? You know, how can we get out of paying them a few more million dollars and putting it to use effectively to get students into housing?
Okay. You launched me a lot of questions there, Sarah. When did we start?
I've got one.
Okay. When did we start trying to fill housing? And we opened in 2016. We started in May of 2015. So a good year and four months in advance. And we have been hitting it as hard ever since. But as Dr. Volgas alluded to, if the students aren't here, they're not really, we can't make students up. So our, the first year, we opened with a very high occupancy, over 300. But since then, the enrollment has declined. So it directly correlates. I don't think that anybody's really doing anything wrong in that part. And then on to your second question, Leslie.
Well, I understand a question for a minute, then. My understanding was, even though you had 300 or something, many of those individuals ended up with financial hardships as a result of that. So maybe you were marketing it, but you're maybe getting the wrong kind of people who didn't necessarily afford that housing. So I think that's an even bigger issue than maybe not bringing people in at all.
Our bad debt was the lowest in year one. So I don't know what correlation. I know there was some rumor that it was maybe more students who didn't pay anything, but the bad debt number was lowest in year one. It was probably highest last year. So we did a much better job collecting and getting students gate in year one than we have since. I don't have those exact numbers in front of me, so. Do you want me to keep going?
Yes, please.
Okay. So to answer your kind of question about what are, you know, what are we doing? And you're taking the part of the brunt. We're the third-party manager. Whether it's full or whether it's not, that is not us. You have an owner. And the money goes, that shortfall goes to the owner and people who bought the lots to fund the facility. It was part of the agreement. Because Northeastern, though they launched a commuter campus, there was some risk there. So we gait that risk. That was what was put in there. So we do everything that we can to try to fill the spaces. We work tirelessly, the staff over there, myself included, to get every student in those beds that we can. So I mean, we're taking the brunt as far as we're out there in the front lines as much as we can trying to recruit students. But it's not, we're just a third-party manager. We're hired by the owner to run a facility.
Somehow, I don't think that was the marketing pitch that we got in the start. And while, you know, while I appreciate you saying that you're a third-party, and, you know, door hangers may be nice and jump dreads might be nice, are you taking in financial responsibility as part of this as well?
No. We were hired as the manager. We're not to take financial responsibility.
I'll leave it open there for the others.
I have a question in terms of, in looking at what you were doing. I was wondering if there's, you mentioned that you're working with admissions. I mean, working with enrollment as well. Because if, you know, with the enrollment projections, it looks like this situation is going to continue and not necessarily get better. So having said that, are there other out-of-the-box options that you're thinking of? Such as perhaps, you know, if there was a conference center, right? Maybe there's housing available here. Or, I don't know, throw this out there, Airbnb. So I'm just, I haven't seen any innovative sort of out-of-the-box marketing.
We have done guest housing. We've done conference housing. We did a, I'm not seeing around $40,000 worth of conference revenue this past summer that we went out and generated a lot of, it's through a school. That's kind of how you get that revenue, or, you know, those associations. And we're open to it for, it depends on the year, what you're doing with your students. And that's a decision, we don't make those decisions. That's a decision that comes from the university on what to do. In the past, there's been concern over opening up and having anybody from the general public there when you have students that are there to try to focus. So if you were to have a cheerleading camp while, during the semester, how are we not conducive to those students that are there for us for the year that work two days with revenue? That's the questions that have been asked, and just being honest. And as far as outside of the box, we continue to try to evolve. We're looking at what other people do. Like I said before, we're on the phone every two weeks with a strategy call. And our marketing department deals with, we have over 200 properties around the country. They let us know if this is working somewhere else. You know, we think this might work at The Nest. Why don't we try it? So anything and everything. We met with Dr. Friday this week, so we do work with enrollment. And he's, we're going to, you know, use the property. We'll pay for some of the digital marketing that he would like to do. He's going to give us a proposal. We work together on that. We consider admissions kind of more of our involvement. But we've never been opposed to working with them or never been adverse with them. And Dr. Friday does come to our management meetings once a month. So anything that we're going to ask us to help him with, we would be there.
Question. You know, I've seen a lot of potential also with international education. And you mentioned that, I discussed that with the president. There is opportunities there throughout the year to award a degree that they'll be here throughout the year, not only in the summer. So there's a great potential in that by balancing it with our own undergrad students and graduate students. And the more we do that, I've had some experience as another university where the degree, you know, is offered here and the students come and live here for a full year or wherever they say at The Nest. It's something we're looking forward to. And on that note, I have to go to another place. Excuse me.
I have a question. So I know a lot of students who their tenure is up to like two hours, and they could definitely go to the room in The Nest, but they aren't exactly financially secure enough to afford it. So what kind of, you know, opportunities are you looking at for scholarships? You know, how to subsidize their stay?
The scholarship that we offer this past year, we give some of that. And there's still a good lease on funding out there to continue to offer that. Again, scholarships don't necessarily come from The Nest. They would come from the school. We work with the school in every way we can to identify additional opportunities and, you know, to continue those programs as much as we can. It expanded this year. It was $22,000 that had been awarded in the past as far as annually for the housing scholarship. This past year, we've awarded, well, not we, the university awarded $50,000. So it's expanding. We're also doing some interesting, trying to do a little bit more marketing on that part that you talked about. And we're working on a map of the area and having students just take a look at really how long their commute and what that would mean if they were to get a campus job or a job or just even study more in those hours, what that might mean to them. So we're looking at some of those different things maybe that students think a little differently on.
Do you know on average how much the scholarship covers per student?
Is it like just a drop in the bucket, or is it covering a lot?
It varies. So the scholarship range was, primarily from Dr. Volgas, that it goes anywhere from $400 per student all the way up to $3,000. So it depended on what their need was, what their gap was between their financial aid package and what else they would need to pay.
Okay. Given the interest of time here, we're going to, you know, just go ahead and conclude my report and just say that we do have another meeting, actually, October 17th. And it's going to be at 8:30 a.m. Central. And for those of you who are interested, these, we will have a presentation on HSI. And we will also, because the technology's actually rolled into this community, there will be a technology roadmap update by the CIO. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee plan. So before we box, there's two more trustees. And I think so, we're going to jump, I will put out an agenda order to get this in motion that we probably take it after.
Thank you very much. Action item 1. A, tenure and rank recommendation for the provost and vice president for academic affairs. Dr. Dennis Roan was hired as provost and vice president for academic affairs and began his duties in September, I'm sorry, in June of, June 17, I'm trying to go fast, 2019. He is a graduate of Lang Tech College, Crepe High School, and he's a product of the Chicago Public Schools. He earned his bachelor's degree from Bradley University, his master's degree from Howard, and his PhD from Washington State University. All of his degrees are in sociology. He has published a number of scholarly articles, as well as three books. Dr. Roan has the endorsement of the Department of Sociology. I request that the board approve the rank of tenure to the new provost and vice president for academic affairs. Dr. Dennis Roan had the rank of professor in the Department of Sociology.
Motion. Second discussion.
Escuicia, Eagle, Huma, Garcia, Kalaya, Halos, Serrano, Stein, Buketish. Motion carried.
Action item 1. B, tenure and rank recommendations for the dean of the libraries. Stephen Harris has been hired as the dean of libraries and began in his position August 1, 2019. Mr. Harris comes to Northeastern after serving as an assistant dean at the University of Navarro Reno since 2013. The new dean of libraries, Stephen H. Harris, is recommended by the acting provost to be grant a tenure and rank of associate professor. I recommend that the board grant tenure to Stephen R. Harris, dean of the libraries, at the rank of associate professor in accordance with the recommendations put forth by the former acting dean with the endorsement of the library staff.
Escuicia, Eagle, Huma, Garcia, Kalaya, Halos, Serrano, Stein, Buketish. Motion carried.
Thank you. Action item 1. C, expenditures of $100,000 under UIC commencement contract renewal. Northeastern Illinois University does not have space to hold an indoor commencement on campus. Therefore, NEIU has held its commencement ceremonies at Credit Union One Arena located on the University of Illinois at Chicago since December 2011. With this proposal, we are asking for a three-year contractual agreement for the use of Credit Union One for six commencement ceremonies. The contract will begin for the December 2019 commencement and will end with the May 2022 ceremony. The Credit Union One Arena has agreed to offer Northeastern a reduced rate for all of the services outlined above as part of a three-year contract. I request that the board approve the three-year contract between NEIU and the University of Illinois Chicago for the use of Credit Union One Arena for future NEIU commencement exercises.
Escuicia, Eagle, Huma, Garcia, Kalaya, Halos, Serrano, Sidikwa, Stein, Buketish. Motion carried.
Action item 1. D, approval of FY '20 operating budget. As you may recall, the FY '20 operating budget was discussed in detail at the finance committee meeting. We are certainly ready to answer any questions that you may have. But I do want to put the motion forward that I am requesting the board of trustees approve the FY '20 budget as outlined in the materials that you have reviewed and as presented in the append tables.
Escuicia, Eagle, Huma, Garcia, Kalaya, Halos, Serrano, Sidikwa.
I would like to comment on letters I think on behalf of the official who's myself as a board of, I think, the state of Illinois for supporting the public universities and so that we were able to receive a substantial amount of dollars not only towards our budget and capital, I think it's cost, but also net money for our students. I agree.
Stein, Buketish. Motion carried.
Action items 1. E, request of FY '21 operating and capital budget request. Again, this proposal was discussed at the committee level. It is in your packet. I know that you have reviewed it in detail. There will be, of course, opportunity to ask questions. But I recommend that the board... There will be, of course, opportunity to ask questions, but I recommend that the board approve the FY21 operating and capital budget requests as outlined in the packet materials that you have.
Motion. Second. Discussion.
Escuicia, Eagle, Fumo, Garcia, Kalaya, Halos, Serrano, Sidiqua.
Stein. I would like to comment on letters I think on behalf of the state of Illinois for supporting the public universities and so that we were able to receive a substantial amount of dollars not only towards our budget and capital, I think it's cost, but also math money for our students.
Good point.
I agree.
Stein.
Yes.
Buketich.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Action items one point E, request of FY21 operating and capital budget request. Again, this proposal was discussed at the committee, committee level. It is in your packet. I know that you have reviewed it in detail. There will be, of course, opportunity to ask questions, but I recommend that the board approve the FY21 operating and capital budget requests as outlined in the packet materials that you have.
Motion. Second. Discussion.
Stein.
Yes.
Buketich.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Action item one point H, approval of I feel tuition rate for computer science. In an effort to develop additional revenues and further diversify our international student enrollment, the NEIU Department of Computer Science has developed a one plus one graduate master of science partnership with the Institute for Future Education Entrepreneurship and Leadership I feel in India. You have in your packet a description of that program. I will add that this program is at the same university as the MBA program that we, that the board approved, the tuition that they approved earlier this year. If you look on the page 35, I'm not sure if we all have the same page numbers, but if you look at the approval of the I feel tuition rates there, you see that we have a tuition rate of $625 for 21 credit hours, plus we have the fees, which will total $17,500. The, this tuition, of course, is higher than the MBA because this is a STEM field and this is what the market will bear for a master's degree in computer science. I request that the board approve the tuition rate for the I feel program, masters in computer science, as outlined within this report.
Motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second. I'll second. Discussion.
So I just want to make a point. So I think it's great that we're having these programs. I think it'll help us as a university as well as helping us with housing. So I'm hoping American Corporate Partners will also reach out globally. I think we're fortunate with India since their native language is English, but I think there's other opportunities and I think some of the colleges and universities can do the English language programs, help individuals from other countries like China and Vietnam who are interested in coming here. Some of our programs could be guided to them. I think that would be helpful as well.
Okay. So, need further discussion?
There's an error in the math.
Okay, what is, what is that? I don't know where.
I just wanted to, page 35, we take the $625 tuition per credit hour times 21, that should be $13,125.
Hi, I'm my senior assistant, my chair of computer science. You're absolutely right on the copy. The real number for the tuition should be $772.19. The total amount stays at $17,500.
So the tuition per credit is off?
Yes.
The bottom number is right, that's the exact value, the difference is the original
tuition, which is closer to an actual tuition of $808. So the difference that you are being asked to approve is less than 5% to what another graduate student would pay.
Okay, so, so what's listed versus the actual amount? So we got the $17,500, were you referring to the $18,000? What are you referring, so I see the $17,500.
Everything that you're seeing on the table is correct except the first number on the last column, when it says $625, it should say $722.19. All the other numbers stay the same.
So can we get that updated on the 28, the quote on it with the context that it will be updated in further, further progress? Okay, thank you. Good night, you. Okay, so.
Escuicia, Eagle, Fumo, Garcia, Kalaya, Halos, Serrano, Sidiqua, Stein, Buketich.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, then we also need to vote, to, a couple, a couple votes related to closed session minutes. I think trustee Stan is in motion.
I'd like to move to approve the destruction of revocation records from the closed session portions of the January 23rd special board meeting and the February 8th, 2018 regular board trustees meetings.
Second. Second. Discussion. Escuicia, Eagle, Fumo, Garcia, Kalaya, Halos, Serrano, Sidiqua. Yes. Stein.
Yes.
Buketich.
Yes.
Motion carried.
I'd also like to move that the continental requirements of the closed session portion of the board trustees meeting held on September 20th, 2018, no longer require continental treatment and are available for public inspection.
Second. Second. Discussion. Escuicia, Eagle, Fumo, Garcia, Kalaya, Halos, Serrano, Sidiqua, Stein, Buketich. Motion carried.
So, you're released. I do have to vote, vote back to the audit committee, but our decision should be a lot quicker now. So I'd like to call on trustee Stan to, to give us the auditing report.
Thank you. The Audit Committee met on August 27th, 2019 at 8:30 a.m. in the Student Union and was briefed on the following items. Status of FY18 audit findings and FY2021 audit plan. The Audit Committee received and accepted the report. The minutes from the meeting are included with today's meeting materials. At this time, I would like to invite trustees who were not present at the meeting, the opportunity to ask any questions and engage in discussion about these three, about these report items.
Any questions?
If not, then I'd like to turn over to President Gibson.
Well, trustee Buketich, you have the comments, grounds committee.
Definitely did. Just have a question, some of the others are on the question. I get some listeners question for you. Well, okay. So I'll just leave you open to this. Right, so finance, buildings and grounds committee met on August 27th, 2019 at 9:30 a.m. in the Student Union and was briefed on the following items. Four items are present for the board action, which we already took today, three were discussed at the August meeting, and one new item. One informational item, student housing update was presented today in a previous report, and the minutes from these meetings are included in today's meeting materials. Couple items that weren't addressed earlier, fiscal year 19, fourth quarter budget to actuals, the construction report, purchases of, purchases between $50,000 and $99,999.99. Report on the reserve limits for non-indentioned entities, preliminary FY21 tuition and fees, contract renewals, touch net payment systems, the CRM system banner, Alucia, and then fiscal year 18 enterprise program report. There's a marketing update, and I want to give Mike a chance because last meeting Mike didn't get anything. Mike, is there anything you want to add or give us an update on from a marketing perspective?
No. The trustees have my marketing presentation in your packet, director point? I have nothing else to add.
Okay. And then with that, at this time, I would like to invite any of the trustees who are not present at any of the committee meetings, the opportunity to ask questions and have a discussion about any of these items that were addressed here that were listed here.
So is there a different, I think, to not, and even when I probably understood, the circle, I don't know how you can make that meaningful, but if you can distill it into maybe a paragraph narrative or what the impact, what are some of the room? That would be helpful because I know I kind of done it, but I don't want to assume that I made my own.
Mike, can you give us one? For you.
That was the engagement by program of interest, which I thought, was it, was it the other comment made today? Where's the interest for the, for the students applying to the other state?
Mike? Oh, would you like for me to explain it now or?
No, 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 you can just, if you could send us a, a story to a paragraph, that would be good. I want to make sure I, I don't want to interpret it myself. Maybe it wasn't my turn to.
Anybody else have any other questions? I just had a comment about the, the marketing. I thought it was extremely well done, sophisticated, much more than we've ever had in the past, and this is kind of a growing experience for the marketing department over years to where we are today, which I think is phenomenal as far as the sophistication of what we're doing. Anyone else? Okay, with that, this is the conclusion of the court.
Thank you. And we'll back to our president's report. As far as the, the work plans, we're going to bypass that unless someone would like to consider it. Otherwise, we all have it in our packets and get a chance to look at it.
Yeah, I would just add, if you have any questions, you know, don't hesitate to give me a call. I want to thank my vice presidents and staff for putting a lot of work into the work plans and actually this goes to the entire university because this was a collaboration of all offices across the institution. And so what we have is the summary from last year and then our plans for this upcoming year. And so working together, I know that we will definitely achieve the work plan that we have outlined for this upcoming year. So I'm very appreciative to each and every one of my staff members for their work on the plans.
Especially for having summarized the various work plans into a much more manageable document. Okay, so one for the legal counsel report.
The trustees received the legal counsel report in advance of the meeting and had an opportunity in closed session to ask questions and having to be completely examine all the materials that are in the report as certain.
Any questions? Okay. As far as home business, anybody have a home business to surface? New business, I would say that I asked Sherry to chair an ad hoc committee with the assistance of Anne and Marvin, that would look at what is a perhaps different approach to the presence of nomination, you know, that we've been using in the past, so.
I think you'd have a big one.
Oh, definitely. It's important.
So we'll meet on April 17th?
April 17th.
On 10th, 2nd, 3rd, at Bell Central. Right after the academic.
And she has shared with me that no, 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 the recommendation, right?
I'm sorry?
It'll be written by the, the recommendation, after you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Because we have a higher common one of those.
She never said that. Anything else on the new business? Okay. We will look at upcoming events. So, NEIU arts and culture events, there's a brochure in our folders of the upcoming performances and films. At the board level, there is a IDHE trustees conference on that next Wednesday. And if folks are interested in carpentry, we can organize that. So let me know.
Do we have anybody representing? If no one else shows up, we have good representation overall, but.
So most of the board, most of the board will be there. And then other meetings that we are coming up, the executive committee will meet at 8:00 a.m. on October 2nd. The academic student affairs and enrollment management committee will meet on Thursday, October 17th, 8:30 at Bell Central. And this also, the ad hoc committee will meet. The finance building and grounds committee will meet on Thursday, October 24th, 8:30 Golden Eagles Room here. And the audit committee will meet on Thursday, October 31st, following, at 8:00 at Golden Eagles Room.
Audit committee.
On Thursday, the next morning, it will be Thursday, November 14th, 1 o'clock, at the Corrider Center. We'll have the academic honors and master's degree ceremonies on Wednesday, December 4th, at 5 o'clock, and at 7:30 respectively. And then the commencement ceremony will be on Sunday, December 15th, at 2:00 p.m. at the Credit Union One Arena. There's also in your folders, the one pager that is all put together, written out again, list of events that looks, the board should be present, we should have a representation of these different events, that are, seven of them listed. Additional things will come up, like tonight there's an event at the Natty Club Table Night, and so a number of us have been close to that event. But these are seven university events that are important moments for us to be seen. And so can you, it's on the record form, go on the record form and just.
Please, will be the end of course.
Not, 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 but if you wanted to just put it out now, if you called it, we'll be fine too. But just anything whether you can guess the time limit, maybe, but no, I can't predict events. I ask that everybody put at least three or four yeses. I ask that everybody put at least three or four yeses in that way, it would give that a little bit of weight in terms of, a little tangency. You have appropriate topics for these events. So can I ask that you do this by next Monday? That's feasible?
Mr. Chairman, I just really want to say that I think a commitment to be on the board is a commitment from your heart and soul and because you have a commitment to do something that's meaningful. But being present at any of these events is very important and is very critical to the support to the administration, to the students, to be there. I just don't want, just to hear you say that, you know, please go to these events, you know. I really think it is very important that they are present, that there are students, there's faculty, there are people that really demonstrate something. I think we're, we need to really do that. I've been to events when there's nobody there. And I just think that is so important, that folks do go from this board to these events.
Okay, thank you for saying that.
I totally agree. I think the point we're trying to do is to make sure that we have someone at every event that we have. So I think that's the overall cause because there are other events where none of us are. And that's why I say if there's something where we don't have anybody scheduled, maybe somebody's still flexible in our schedules to try and accommodate this. Hopefully we can. I think it's good that we can participate.
So it'll be.
Could you pull up here the software tool where you can do the voting so you can see what other people have voted? This way we can not only get a answer here. If anybody knows what the tool is, let me know, or I'll figure it out. But there's a voting where you list all the individuals. They all vote and everybody can see where everybody else is on. This way we can make sure we get our original.
I will have to.
So let's just say that after call gets set up, he'll send out an email letting us know. And let's see if we can't turn it around in $48. Any sponsors? We have our second board retreat on November 1st. We'll follow the same schedule from the last one, which I think is a beta clock breakfast, 8:30 start, and we'll wrap up at the lunch. Is there anything else brought up today?
Same place, I will wrap it first.
Yes, as of today, same place. Beta clock breakfast, 8:30 start. Beta clock. Yes. So if there is no new business, can I have a motion for adjournment? Sharon, second. Yes?
Anybody opposed?
Your polls, you can stay here some of the night? All right, thank you. Take a look.